We are going to start our board meeting. Thank you so much for being here. Welcome back to the meeting of the Board of Education for San Bernardino City Unified. And we are going to open our meeting and I'm going to ask Dr. Funches, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you. Please stand for the flag salute. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Thank you. We are now at 1.3 approval of the agenda.
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and second. And if there are there any, um, there you are, Mr. Gallo. Alright, are there um, any discussions or pull, I don't, Dr. Volkmer, are you pulling anything at this time?
No, Madam President.
Madam President, I would like to pull um, in the consent item, or are we gonna wait till we get there?
We'll wait till we get there. I thought he had something up early.
Okay, I'm only gonna pull one item.
Alright, thank you. I will go ahead and then take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina? She was there. Um, Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Did she say? Dr. Flores said aye?
Aye, can you hear me?
I can hear you a little bit. You're breaking up a thing. And then Dr. Hill?
Okay, aye.
Aye. And Gwen Rogers' aye. Motion carry. Thank you so much.
Dr. Wyatt, aye.
Oh, Dr. Wyatt, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Dr. Wyatt, aye.
And I'm looking at you and it's like.
It's aye, Madam President.
Alright.
President Roger, President Roger, I'm sorry to interrupt. And now that you've taken the, taken the agenda forward and approved it, we did need to pull two items. I am so sorry. Here and reminded me. Um, we would, we would like to pull um, items 4.5 and 4.6 from the agenda. We're not quite ready to move forward with those yet.
Okay, 4.5 and 4.6, and I'm gonna take the vote again.
My apologies.
No worries, no worries. Alright, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye, aye, can you hear me? Aye.
Yes. And Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt? Did I say you?
Aye.
I don't wanna forget you.
Just in case, aye.
And Gwen Rogers' aye. Alright, motion carry. We'll take those items off. And tonight, 1.4, we are going to be inspired by none other than Dr. Hill.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I hope you are inspired. I was looking at a website of superintendent in Buffalo, New York, and he had listed inspirational quotes from transformation leaders. And these will not only apply to uh, us as board members, but also cabinet, staff, parents, and students. So hopefully, we can all use them to uh, just take another look at our lives and mindset. So here goes. "A person's mind stretched to a new idea never goes back to its original dimensions. Risks come from not knowing what you're doing. Let's shift from what's wrong to what's strong. There is only one way to avoid criticism. Do nothing, say nothing, be nothing. I have been impressed with the urgency of doing. Knowing is not enough, we must apply. Being willing is not enough, we must do. How wonderful it is that nobody needs to wait a single moment before starting to improve the world. When the organization and for us, the school, expect to frown, be sure to smile. When the organization is troubled and insecure, be sure to provide poise and composure. When the organization needs you most, most, lead by example. The line between failure and success is so fine that we are often on the line and do not know it. Too many of us are not living our dreams because we are living our fears. Have utmost concern for what's right rather than who's right. When the best leader's work is done, the people say, "We did it ourselves." And finally, when I stand before God at the end of my life, I would hope that I would not have a single bit of talent left and can say, "I used everything you gave me." So thank you for listening."
Thank you, Dr. Hill, for that inspiration. 2.0 special presentation, and we have 2.1, resolution in recognition of Veterans Day. And I will ask if Mr. Gallo could read the resolution?
Yes, Madam President, I'd be happy to. Um, uh, this is a resolution and recognition of Veterans Day. Whereas the United States of America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all. And whereas November 11th, 1918 marked the end of World War I, and in 1938, Congress passed a bill to dedicate November 11th to the cause of world peace, and following World War II, the day became Veterans Day. And whereas America has called upon our men and women in uniform to protect our national security, advance our national interests, and preserve our rights and freedom. On Veterans Day, we recognize these men and women of our own forces who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas on Veterans Day, all citizens should pause to reflect and honor our veterans, our MIAs, and those brave Americans, past and present, whose service and sacrifice enable us to enjoy peace and freedom in this, in the greatest nation in the world, the United States of America. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby expresses its gratitude, appreciation, and respect for the service and sacrifice of veterans and members of all branches of the United States, armed forces, and encourages district schools to undertake educational activities that commemorate the history and contributions of our nation's veterans. So move.
Thank you. It's been moved and second. If there's no further discussion, I will take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers' aye. Motion carry. Thank you. At this time, we are now going to move to 3.1, um, closed session, and Ms. Cunningham, is there any?
There are more comments for, for closed session.
Okay, we will now uh, adjourn to closed session. And um, to our listening audience, we will be back soon. Alright, board, let's log out. Perfect. Looks like everybody's back. Everybody's back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, everybody was quiet. I was like, wait, whoa.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you.
Alright, very good. Then we are now going to move to 3.2, adjourn. Back to, we are 4.0 reconvene to open session. 4.1?
Be it out, right?
Um, yeah, I am going to report out here at 4.1. Beginning at 4.1, shall I say? "Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following Assistant Director, Special Education, effective date..." Wait. I need to go down further. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Juarez David, Assistant Director, Special Education, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined."
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mike Gallo?
Aye.
Rosales Medina?
Aye.
I and Ms. Gwen Rogers' aye. Motion carry. Thank you. 4.2, Assistant Director of Special Education. And it is, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Pearson Anne, Assistant Director, Special Education, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined."
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. If there's no discussion, we will take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers' aye. Motion carry. Thank you. 4.3? Coordinator, Special Education, Academic Instruction? And "Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Roland Barby, Coordinator, Special Education, Academic Instruction, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined."
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and second. If there's no discussion, we'll vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers' aye. Motion carry. Thank you. And I believe, let's see. We have another one, 4.4. Five and six was removed. Right, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Adad Eva, Elementary School Principal, Hocum, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined."
So move. Second.
It's been moved and second. And if there's no discussion, we will vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers' aye. Motion carry. Thank you. Now moving down to 5.0, public comments. 5.1?
Can I ask, Madam President?
Yes.
Folks not speaking, to mute their mics. It's like we have Dark Raider out there.
Yeah, I don't know who it is.
We, we know, but everyone, can you mute if you're not speaking? Thank you. 5.1 is public comments. And Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay, we have 11 comments that came in today, but I have three that I'm gonna read first that were from the 1027 special board meeting. Okay, the first one. Um, it's from anonymous. "I know the board does not always respond to comments, but can you please provide clarification on the learning preference? Some schools are calling it a vote. Is it a vote or a choice? I thought it was a choice. That once it deemed safe for us to return, I could choose if my child returned to school or remained in distance learning. Will it not be my choice and be determined by a majority vote?" The next one is from Robert Jeffers, a student. "I'm a senior football player at Indian Springs, and football needs to be brought back in so many ways. It's beneficial towards us as a way to college and also a way to cool off and get pressure off of us. We know the proper steps to stay safe and prevent COVID for becoming a problem. We all really love football, and we'll do whatever it takes to have our season." And the last one from 1027, this is anonymous. Okay, "The United States Census Bureau recently released its figures on the most impoverished large cities in the country. San Bernardino is the second poorest large city in the US. Um, this election year 2020, this year of unprecedented unemployment, homelessness, and poverty, this board voted unanimously to gift a board member's daughter $439,000 and several classrooms for her elementary charter, Savant, on a middle school campus, Del Vallejo, in the middle of a pandemic, all the while professing in ads to keep teachers and kids safe when we return to our schools. Apparently not the students in this community that are served by SBCUSD. Is hope happening for these children? A handful of students that are not from our district received valuable space as well. For example, Del Vallejo Special Ed Building, STEM Lab, Computer Yearbook Lab, and more totaling 11 classrooms. What about social distancing? What about saving lives? Why force our Special Education Department, children, and teachers into regular classrooms not designed for their special needs? Special education funds paid for that building for the students at Del Vallejo as it did for all middle school students in the district. Why deprive our community? The district informed EV staff that a parent's center is a luxury, apparently one that our community does not deserve. One of the classrooms given to the elementary charter. Del Vallejo leadership, CM Academy has over 500 students this year, and we cannot even get Savant's small number of student enrollment occupying the much-needed classrooms. Why target our under, under, excuse me, underprivileged community of taxpayers? Voters where 95% of the school's population lives below the poverty level. The money gifted to Savant is slated for renovations, including a fence and play area for the elementary school. There was a district Special Education Charter occupying half the space in the Special Ed Building. We had been trying to have them removed from our campus for years. Now all of a sudden, they are gone. Why now? Why have our concerns not been addressed? Comments will continue until our voices are heard. There has been a lot of construction occurring on district properties. One board member is said to have several small construction companies. Who is getting Savant's contract and who has been receiving district contracts for construction over the past five years? Perhaps someone should file a public records request under the state of California's open records rules. It is a shame that a taxpayer would have to file to get this information. My understanding of the statute is that the records must be made available for public inspection and review. The rules are there to safeguard the public's interest, the taxpayers' interests. Since this board has refused to answer any of the questions or concerns posed, the public is free to draw its own conclusions. Why are you devaluing an entire population of underprivileged children for a charter that belongs to a board member's daughter? Savant has been given a master key to Del Vallejo, and after 10 years, the homeless population is miraculously removed from behind 7-Eleven. Why is this important, one may ask? Because the homeless has been occupying our campus for years. In our cafeteria, the overpasses. Savant has a master key, and approximately two weeks ago, the city moved the homeless from behind 7-Eleven. The sad part about it is that this was not done for the safety of the, of the community children that attend the school. Is that a coincidence? Um, and then vote for those who represent your children, which is why I wrote in. Okay. That was it from 1027. "My name is Anthony Leonardi. I am a T-cell immunologist educated at Johns Hopkins, '09 and '12, and I did my PhD at the National Cancer Institute. In my opinion, children are at risk from this virus that can spread by the air. Despite high rates of survival, they may be at risk of the same recent findings in adults, like rare reports of Parkinson's disease after infection. In another study, adults were found to have persistent virus four months out in their intestines, and it appeared to be challenging the immune system, system. In another study, yet to be proven or disproven, the virus may be replicating inside CD4 T cells, cells responsible for disease control. If you consider these findings together, the virus may be remaining in the body and could cause chronic and even worsening disease. Also, reinfections have been reported where the second time was worse than the first. In short words, it is possible the disease could be chronic or get worse over a lifetime, and reinfections have been shown to be severe in 38 out of 220 cases in one study. Please avoid infection by not having indoor classes and avoiding congregation until proper mitigations rather than half-measures can be made by public health authorities. Sincerely." This is from Kirk Sunstrom, a parent. "Seeing how so many have had to sacrifice their jobs or daytime hours in order to be present with their children schooling, in addition to the trending educational downfalls of so many students, is it possible for parents who have less concern of contracting COVID-19 to have their children in class full-time while those with more concern to tune in virtually?" This is from Diana Enriquez, another parent. "Yesterday at the town hall meeting, someone answered that we cannot stay in distance learning because the state thinks it is not ideal for students. So my question is, if it's not ideal, why is it one of the choices? And how is going two days to school for three hours going to make a difference in kids' learning if that consists in a change of teacher, classmates, and possibly a change of school, as stated yesterday at the meeting?" This is from anonymous. "I'm writing this on behalf of many teachers at the elementary level to bring a few issues to your attention. Who is lying here, the board or the district leadership? The board says teachers will have the flexibility to choose which model works best for them based on a number of factors, including health concerns. But the district is, wait a minute, but the district says it's based on seniority. These are completely different directions. Teachers are already overwhelmed in getting different direction from the board, district leadership, and departments like continuous improvement. The board says this year is different, and we want to give teachers flexibility to teach their class in the best interest of the students, and this is like no other year. But you have the Continuous Improvement Department trying to force teachers to do things like it's a normal year, and what isn't best for students who missed a large portion of last year's content and are playing catch-up. Someone needs to get control of this district before it's too late. This district is in real need of a strong superintendent. Support your students, teachers, and parents, not district staff sitting at home, not teaching a class, nor has taught a class in a distance learning model." The next one's from Elizabeth Orozco. Uh, "Will the kids still be able to interact with other kids, like play with each other during recess?" Next, we have anonymous from a parent, looks like. "Perhaps the district should consider a different plan. Leave most teachers on distance learning and utilize the help of willing district guest teachers to act as tutors and helpers for those students at highest risk who need to be on campus. The regular teacher can still instruct online, but the student will be at school with a guest teacher close by to help with anything they don't understand. By doing this, there are less students on campus, and teachers won't have to worry about double duty. Also, there are many guest teachers who will appreciate the employment opportunity. This also helps students keep teachers they already love while still getting to go on campus." Next is from Maria Lopez, a parent. "Our kids are already established in a relationship with their school, teacher, and other staff members. Why is the school district trying to break this up? This is crazy, and if the school district does this model, I will be forced, like many others, to pull my four kids out of this district." From anonymous, "Thank you to the district for sending out the communication regarding the consideration for the early retirement incentive. It is so important that the district and school board take seriously the implications of the upcoming budget over the next few years due to the impact of COVID. I would very much like to see this incentive offered so that younger, newer teachers will not get laid off, and we can possibly avoid furloughs. Please also don't take too long to make the offer so teachers and staff can have time to consider what is best for themselves and their families." From Olivia Sanchez. "I'm a teacher who is concerned about the drive-through assemblies that are, that our administrators are asking us to participate in. With COVID numbers rising and the seasonal flu season upon us, I feel that asking teachers to come back on campus to participate in drive-through awards assemblies is not in the best interest of our teachers and our students. I would ask that the board put a halt to these drive-through events until COVID numbers and the seasonal flu season has passed. Thank you for taking our health into consideration." From anonymous, "I would like to thank all of you for making sure that students are not going back to school until COVID numbers go down. As a teacher who is doing distance learning and a mom who has a child in distance learning, my experience with distance learning is a successful one. I am seeing students thrive, especially those who tend to be a little more shy in the classroom. Please keep our teachers and students safe by not allowing us to go back until COVID numbers have gone down and we are out of the purple tier. Also, yesterday in the town hall meeting, Dr. Funches said that teachers were going to be given options on continuing teaching in distance learning or going into blended learning based on seniority. Mr. Tillman said that any teacher who did not feel comfortable teaching in this current climate could continue teaching from home. I'm a relatively new employee with the district, and I fear I will not have a choice. I'm a mom and wife who wants to stay healthy and safe for my family and loved ones around me, and I do not feel safe under the guidelines being discussed for blended learning. How is it fair that I have to risk my health, health and life and those around me just because parents are unhappy with their kids being home and having to participate in distance learning? Thank you for your time and consideration. Please do the right thing and continue distance learning for all those who feel it is the best for their families. That includes all teachers." And my last one is from Michelle Panos. "As a teacher of SBCUSD, I understand that it's difficult, that it is a difficult time for everybody. For most, we had to learn a new teaching platform. We had to teach that platform to children who cannot even hold a pencil, as well as older students that are already set in their ways. I, for one, would like to take a moment to celebrate some successes I have had with distance learning. I have been a teacher for 17 years at Lincoln Elementary School. Most of you know our school's perceived reputation. I am submitting this comment to let you know it is not true. We have some of the most dedicated teachers at our school. We are working harder than we ever have before. We are implementing new strategies, including the mathematical sequence in which Tracy Dieckmann has endlessly been training and working with us to both improve our teaching and expand our students' deep understanding of mathematics. Yes, it is more work, however, the students are grasping the why instead of just how, instead of just the how of mathematics. I would also like to take a minute to express my gratitude to the parents of our students. I have never seen so much parent involvement in education as I have so far this year. I talk to parents daily, not just about academics, about their families, their concerns, and their celebrations. Because those relationships are being built, the parents buy, the parent buy-in is high. I love when parents sit in with their child in their Google Meet. I can see that they are getting a better understanding of what their child is learning and how they can help at home. I can't help but strongly feel that even if our students slip behind a little bit, once we are back at school with the relationships we've, we have built with parents in the community and the extra professional development we are currently receiving, we are on the road to work as partners with our peers, support staff and parents to succeed. We will get through this together." And that is all the comments.
Thank you. Alright, we will move now to 6.0, reports and comments by union organization. The first one, 6.1, is San Bernardino, San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there a representative tonight?
Yes, Ms. Rogers. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Superintendent Volkmer, members of the board and cabinet. I am Ashley Vitasalkala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. Tonight, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank the board for taking action to support Proposition 15, which would, could have brought $337 million to our district. Unfortunately, at this time, it appears we are still short of the votes that needed for it to pass. However, there are still thousands of outstanding ballots to be accounted across the state, which still could change the outcome. We will know more next month if that becomes the case. Tonight, the district will be presenting more information on their progress towards a possible return to in-person learning, when it is deemed safe to do so by the board, and contingent on current COVID data for our county and school district. We continue to meet with the district to negotiate items related to in-person learning and their effect on our unit. At this time, there remains many items still to discuss and come to agreement on. Although we're still in the planning stages, I want to remind the board that for another week, our county is still in the purple tier, which means COVID cases are still widespread. This week has also brought, as reported by the SB Sun today, the highest hospitalization numbers for the county that we have seen since August, and the COVID positive case rates continue to increase, and that has remained consistent over the past several weeks. It is also troubling to note that the cases amongst youth aged five to nineteen in our school district is now up to twelve hundred. And the case rate countywide is sixteen per hundred thousand people, which is more than double the statewide metric to move to a lower tier. Also of note today is over ten counties throughout the state have moved back from the red tier into purple, including San Diego, our neighbor to the south. As we progress into the winter and flu season, it appears that these numbers will continue to increase. This is a deadly disease, and we are just barely beginning to learn about the long-term effects it has even on those who have recovered. Therefore, it is imperative that as long as we continue to be in the purple tier, the safest way for us to deliver instruction remains keeping all students and staff in distance learning. And as I have stated before, I want to be able to assure our members that the district and the board are making sound decisions based on science and with all of the knowledge we have available to us. It is exciting to hear yesterday that there is a vaccine that shows a high percentage rate of accuracy in protecting us from the virus, but we won't know how long it will take for that vaccine to be distributed to the millions and millions of people throughout the United States. And we continue to expect the board and the district to hear our voices and also to keep safety as your number one priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your report. Six point two, California School Employees Association, is there someone representing tonight?
Hi, President Rogers, it's Veronica Peta, First Vice President for CSCA.
Hello.
Good, how are you? Good evening, VP Wyatt, I didn't forget you, I promise, and Dr. Hill, Mr. Gallo. Well, then we met Dr. Flores and Ms. Abigail Medina, and of course, Mr. Tillman. I hope you guys are all having a good evening. I know these meetings are long, so I'll try to make it quick and as best I can. So of course, all of you guys know that we were able to come to an agreement as far as bargaining. Thank you for the two percent as well as the five seven nine, which hopefully our CSCA employees are taken advantage of because that is a really, really big thing. It's a milestone for us. We're very appreciative and grateful that we were able to reach that. And we are now working on negotiating the custodial runs in order to look at how they're going to be doing work if and when the kids come back. So that's kind of a new thing that we're working on with the district. Besides that, everything's just, you know, chugging along. We're doing the best we can in the circumstances, so I hope you guys are all doing well and taking care of yourselves. And just a quick shout out to our warehouse guys because they have been working so hard, literally since the lockdown, to take in all of the mail and go to the post office and get mail for our sites and deliver the pony and deliver all the PPE. They haven't taken a break since the pandemic started. And they have just been making sure that we're getting everything we need from curriculum to devices for the kids to all the sites. They've been helping out with that as well. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that they've just been working really hard. So thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to say hello because I haven't seen y'all since February. I think that was the last board meeting I got to go to before this happened, so thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you for your report. Have a great evening as well. We're moving to six point three, Communication Workers of America. Is there someone on the line to represent?
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is Teresa Hunter with CWA nine five eight eight. I apologize, there's a little bit of background because I'm also in another meeting at the same time on the Zoom platform, so I'll make this very quick. Really good to see everyone. Good evening, Honorable Board, Dr. Funches, everyone. Looking forward to hearing about the school reopening plans. And we are, we will be continuing along with our bargaining at some point. We are kind of at a pause point at this moment, but we will be contin- continuing on. And so I look forward to seeing the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And six point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association, is there someone on the line? I am not hearing anyone. Want to make sure, Ms. Cunningham, there's no one in there that I don't see? All right, we will move to seven point O present- presentation. And seven point one, twenty twenty-one, school reopening update. And as I mentioned, board, it is a quite detailed report, has certain sections, so I'll be guiding along. If you have comments that you put in there, we want to kind of give them an opportunity to get through that section. So in case of your, your questions are answered, we'll be able to move through in a pretty good pace. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Volkmer, as you present who is going to come first.
Great, thank, thank you, President Rogers. Board, at, at the last school board meeting, you asked the question, is it possible to give our, our families some degree of certainty in terms of, you know, we won't return to in-person instruction until such a time in the future? So that they can make plans for childcare, for their, you know, their own schedules over the holidays, et cetera, et cetera. Just to be able to bring, again, a degree of certainty to not, we will open, but we won't open at least until this point, if at the very earliest. And so we've designed this presentation to give you the information to be able to have that discussion. We're going to share all the pieces of a very complex puzzle with you. And you're going to see lots of numbers, lots of information about what it takes to actually open a district as large as ours in a, in a, what would be a blended learning or hybrid learning phase three type of model. We're hopefully going to try to summarize all of that toward the end into a fairly simplified, what we call a Gantt chart, that will, that will hopefully make it very easy to, to, to share and share your thoughts and have that discussion. We're going to provide our updates on progress and timelines. And of course, all of this, and we have to say this, all of it is contingent on the numbers of cases and the color of the, you know, colors of the county. And not only our county, but our local context, and that's one of the things that the board has always taken very seriously, is not just what's happening countywide at, in the largest, you know, land county in the, in the country, but what's happening in the cities that we serve, in the city of San Bernardino, and then partially the city of Highland, and of course, the unincorporated areas. And so what we're going to hopefully facilitate for you this evening is the ability to have that discussion and say, we won't return until at least this point. And then even at that point, we may not be able to return, given our numbers and the colors and such. So I want to commend, just take a minute to commend the many, many people that are working on the various elements of this issue. We've, we've got literally hundreds of minds working on this day in and day out to, to bring a degree of reason and certainty and sensibility to it, so I want to thank them. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Menares to lead us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. And good evening, board. Good evening, President Rogers, Dr. Wyatt, board member, community, and all those who are listening. Thank you for being a part of this presentation tonight. We'll go to the next slide and I'll go through the, the objectives for this evening. So board, by the end of this meeting, we will share with you what we believe is the earliest date that we could be ready to offer some in-person and learning and then ask you to make a decision. You may need additional information, and our goal is to constantly give you the information you, you need. So tonight, we're going to continue to update you on the trend data. And again, as Dr. Volkmer shared, share where we are and the various stages of preparing for any kind of in-person learning. And then ask for some guidance from you. And then finally, we're going to close out tonight with the distance learning in action, highlighting our secondary education. So that will be our video for the evening. Next slide, please. Board, here's your recap from October twentieth. You know that there was a special board meeting in between that. So the Board of Education considered input from multiple perspectives on Proposition fifteen during a special board meeting on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. On October twentieth, you made it clear that due to local trends and COVID cases, it was very unlikely that our schools will welcome students for any in-person instruction before January. You would consider adopting a target date or readiness date for allowing in-person learning to begin, should it be deemed safe to do so. So again, that's what our goal is for you this evening. The Board of Education, you authorized in-person outdoor conditioning for small cohorts of student athletes under strict safety protocols that are aligned with our county public health guidance. And then finally, in memory of the former superintendent, Dr. E. Neil Roberts, you adjourned the meeting in his memory. So that is the recap from October twentieth. Next slide, please. Board, we want to thank you for adopting these, these reopening guiding principles. They have been instrumental. We use them in all kinds of presentations that we, we do, whether that's with our community, like our town hall meeting last night, our board meeting each time. And we're going to start hosting some meetings with some additional team members throughout the district, and this will continue to be the goal. So we thank you for that, and these are, again, the guiding principles that you continue to use in your decision-making. We have to ensure health and physical safety of students and staff while we adhere to federal, state, and county guidance. In that, we want to continue to provide high-quality learning experiences. So we, we see our teachers continuing to improve upon distance learning. We're just so proud of them. We know how much they've stretched and grown, and we just can't commend them any more than we have. They just are doing a fabulous job. And while we're trying to figure out how we can, as we prepare for in-person, we want to continue to provide safe and accessible working conditions for all of our employees. So again, thank you for these guiding principles. They have really helped to guide our work as a district. Next slide. So we shared this progression of instructional models with you and the community sometime in August. And, and as you know, we are in distance learning phase one. But tonight, you're going to hear where we are with potentially phase two and the readiness there. And then phase three, which is what we're referring to as blended learning. So tonight, we're going to focus on phase two and phase three and then close out with a video about phase one. The next slide. And then finally, board, just a reminder that we will not take action until you deem it safe to do so. So we want to point out to you the various elements that have to be in place and where we are with that, right? We have to adhere to the state guidelines. We'll give you a bit more detail on that this evening. We have to be sure, and so in those state guidelines, of course, it includes the transmission rates, but we're also monitoring the local transmission rates within our boundaries. That's very important to the board, and we understand that. We'll be sharing with you where we are with the PPE, the, both the acquisition and the distribution of that, how our schools are panning out in terms of being physically ready, and then the amount of staff training that needs to happen and our timeline on that. And there's quite a bit of in-between information that we'll also be sharing. And all of that, so that you can then let us know when would be the earliest we might offer some in-person learning. Again, knowing that the data trends could change, and so we, we recognize that that's a piece of all of this. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Menares, and good evening, board and community. This slide's just a reminder of the levels that we're at as far as widespread and substantial. So any new cases, daily new cases over seven, leave us in the widespread range, and we are clearly in that area. Next slide, please. Board, as you can see, COVID cases continue to rise significantly within our county, the cities that we cover and within our school district boundaries. San Bernardino City continues to have the highest number of cases at all levels throughout the county. In children, we do have over twelve hundred cases, as you heard earlier. Hospitalization rates within the county are at forty percent from a month ago, as projected a month ago, as the cases continue to climb. When we look at the new counties, the county's new COVID trends, we are seeing a steady rise in cases since early September and are projecting in our meetings with the county and state officials that cases may increase significantly throughout the remainder of this calendar year. Next slide, please. Board, this slide of the next are going to show you the levels of personal protective equipment that we have been receiving since the onset of the pandemic. We're happy to report that nearly all of the PPE is currently in, staged at our warehouse and pending delivery to all of our sites and departments this month. This includes over two million face coverings. This week, we're also purchasing clear face coverings for staff and students who need the ability to see others' lips moving. Next slide, please. And board, this is just a, a second visual of the personal protective equipment to include disinfecting wipes, hand sanitizer, the new electrostatic sprayers our custodial staff will be using, and the thermal, the thermal temperature scanners. So you can see, we've made great strides. I want to thank our, our purchasing department and our logistics section on our incident management team that has been working nonstop to find this material and get it into the district. I'll now turn it over to Sam Precy, who's going to give you an additional update on the PDS preparations.
Okay, and before you go to the next portion, Mr. Tillman, you had a question for Mr. Fritter?
Yes, can we go back to the purple slides? The one before this? Yes, and I think it's critical, Mr. Fritter, if, if it's still the cap, the, the county's policy, yeah, maybe even the state policy, that we're in purple, how long do we have to stay in purple? And when we change it to red, what does that change? What's, what's the, is it still the same direction? And if it is, can you reiterate it, please?
Yeah, Mr. Tillman, thanks. Great question. So in essence, we, we would need to meet red tier criteria for four weeks before we would actually transition into the red tier. And we are not trending in any direction towards the red tier at this time, so.
And then once we got to the red tier, how long we have to stay in the red tier in order to operate under the red guidelines?
Two weeks. So, so we'll have to meet red tier criteria for two weeks, and then we will officially transition to it. And then we have to remain in red tier criteria for two additional weeks, at which time then the board can make a decision to reopen schools.
And, and I say that, board, because that drives a lot, that we're out of control of. If it's already November the tenth, and Mr. Fritter said that the, the thought from the public health experts are that the numbers are going to increase. So you're looking at the whole, at least the month of December being gone and part of the month of January. At, that, that's the best case scenario. So you're, you're already talking about the end of January before we can even legally consider doing the hybrid. So I just want to make sure that even because what we want to do, we're not even allowed to do anything before that timeline. Unless someone, unless I's looking at this wrong, Mr. Fritter, or someone else want to tell me I'm missing something. Am I wrong in thinking that?
No, these are, this is what's guiding us right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But I, then I have one other question. The, the, when you list the PPEs, is, is that the PPEs? Could you show what you purchase in the state allocation? But are you saying that that's the sufficient amount that we need and that in no area of PPEs we're lacking?
Yeah, that's correct. So we have trigger points for additional purchases once school begins. But we believe that what we have on hand now is going to get us through the remainder of this school year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, um, Dr. Flores, I wasn't quite clear, was it something that Dr. Menares had said earlier or, or down the way?
Yeah, which he said, could you go back to your slides, Dr. Menares? Um.
That one?
No, the next one before.
The recap?
Yeah, the recap. I was just wondering, um, because yesterday you included a slide on the blended program. We're not going to go there today.
Um, in terms of the scheduling, Dr. Flores?
Yeah.
We weren't going to get into the scheduling today. We'll answer questions. We don't have a specific slide on scheduling. We will get into, um, some of the, you know, the, where the, the parent survey is at this point and the implications for staffing. We will go there.
Okay, and I just want, thank you. And I just want the parents to know that, given what Mr. Retirin, what Mr. Tillman just stated, based on the data, we are still in purple. And, and we cannot even begin to entertain that we're going to be opening up to our blended at all in terms of just the data. And I, I just want to tell the parents and our public that this is a very deadly. that this is a very deadly disease, just like Ms. Akala stated earlier. And it's airborne, and and we just have to be really mindful of protecting our children and our staff. And so, and I appreciate, you know, our staff and all our cabinet working towards, you know, getting ready. But we are not ready, given the data. So I want to just thank you for that. And I know that it's very frustrating for parents and grandparents and the kids, but you know, we're talking about life and death. And we just don't want to, I've read articles all over from all over the United States. In Arkansas, there were over two thousand, they opened up and over two thousand teachers got COVID. And I don't, I don't know how many hundreds and thousands of kids got COVID. And of course, that multiplies. It multiplies by the contacts. So we just have to be really careful. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Precy?
Yes, thank you, Board President. Good evening, board. I'm going to spend a couple of minutes discussing with you our physical distancing measures that are being installed district wide at all school sites and administrative offices to help ensure the environment for our children and staff will be clean, safe, and healthy upon their return to school when deemed safe to do so. So on this slide, the numbers below each item indicate our progress in red. So for instance, two thousand seven hundred twenty-three in red means and in dark blue being the total number of items that need to be implemented. So for that particular item, we are at one hundred percent complete. So some items are one hundred percent completed. Others, we still have significant progress that's required before we can report back that all areas are ready for occupancy. And as you know, all school districts and businesses, they're preparing for their eventual reopening. So this has placed a strain on supply chains across the nation. However, based on the information that we have received from our vendors and contractors, and we just got our latest update yesterday, in fact, that we believe our physical spaces will be ready by late December. We've made significant investments into our classrooms from medical grade MUR seventeen HEPA air scrubbers, which clean the air inside our occupied spaces, as well as changing out all the air conditioning filters to MUR eleven. So with regards to indoor air quality, San Bernardino Unified School District will exceed the recommendations from the California Department of Education and the guidance from the CDC for reopening schools. We're also installing portable hand washing stations throughout our campuses and touchless hand sanitizing stations in all classrooms and throughout the district. The placement of these devices will help ensure students and staff will have readily accessible means to either wash or sanitize their hands frequently throughout the day to help minimize the spread of COVID and other transmissible viruses. You know, we're coming into cold and flu season. I think someone just mentioned that a few minutes ago. So we need to make sure that we're doing everything possible to keep the students and staff healthy. So having these devices are going to be critical for that. In addition to this, we will also have more frequent sanitizing of our high touchpoints, like door handles and gates, using our new electrostatic sprayers and a new chemical which has been approved by the CDC for killing the COVID virus in just forty-five seconds, and is one of thirteen chemicals approved and placed on the EPA N-list, which is able to kill the virus with no allergic or respiratory impact. The stabilized hydrogen peroxide-based cleaning chemical is certified for use in healthcare settings. Physical barriers are also being installed in those spaces where we're unable to maintain six feet in distance. And you can see then total, it's going to be close to twenty-six thousand pieces or locations with Plexiglas. We will also have drinking fountains being modified, a bottle filling stations, which are safer, and will also help minimize the spread of COVID nineteen, as well as being a permanent improvement to our campuses. Temperature scanners will be installed at each school entrance, and those will verify student temperature and also check that the student is wearing the mask and wearing it correctly. Both conditions will need to be met in order to proceed to the next station. And finally, over twenty thousand pieces of signage will be installed. They'll be in the form of wind runners, A-frames, sandwich boards. They'll be posted on our playgrounds, on windows and doors throughout our spaces, and all with age-appropriate pictographs and wording in English and Spanish. You know, this is quite the undertaking. Although the timeline has been extended to late December, we do feel that additional time is necessary for one reason, to receive the equipment from our suppliers, but also to make sure the spaces are safe for our students and staff return. So I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity of providing you, the board, and the community, an update on our physical distancing preparations, and also for allowing us the opportunity to provide these critical, significant investments in our building assets.
Thank you, Sam. So board, over the last few months, we've really been following and sifting through guidance. Actually, I think I heard Ms. Rogers, eight months. I can't believe it's been that long, but the guidance started coming out this summer and then towards the end of the summer and early fall. And so there are really four primary guidelines that we must follow if and when we open for in-person learning experiences. And the first one is that every individual must wear, must wear a mask. And this has come out both from the federal, the state, and the local level. Board, you took action in August to pass the COVID mitigation board policy, which includes the wearing of masks for all of our students and employees. Just a reminder that for our younger students, they can wear a face covering or face shield. That's what our board policy says. And that for any child, for one reason or another, whether it's medical or disability or something along those lines that may need an accommodation, that can be made for them and will be made for them. But your board policy covers ensuring all individuals wear face coverings, and we need to be sure that that happens. The second primary guideline, I would say, that must be practiced is this idea of physical distancing, right? So we have to be sure that we keep our students and our staff the six feet apart. And so this is a huge impact on our schools because we just cannot house all of our students on campus at the same time and still maintain that six feet of distancing. That's why we're looking at some kind of blended model. The third primary guideline that comes up over and over again in the guidance is this important of the hand washing and our sanitizing of schools, and that this must be part of our daily routines. So you're going to hear a little bit later in our board presentation, you've heard about what we've purchased in order to make this hand washing and sanitation and the signage that's going to be in place. But then you'll hear just a little bit about the training that we're going to need to perform with all of our staff so that they can work with our students and teach a new expectation in terms of hand washing and sanitizing. And then finally, a more recent set of guidance is around minimizing movement and number of students. So you might hear this referred to as the cohorting. The more recent guidance really suggests that we need to do our best to try to minimize the interactions of different groups of students with each other when we move to a blended model. So that's definitely a challenge when we think about setting up our schools and most specifically our secondary schools. We're reaching out to other districts to see how they are adhering to this idea of minimizing movement and number of students. And so more will be forthcoming on that. But these are the four key principles that have run through all the different guidance, and they are the trends that are really guiding our work. And again, this is just information to give to you, board, so that you have everything that's out there. So with that, we'll move to the next slide, and I will start to share with you this idea of what we could be offering for phase two. So in phase two, we, as a district, we kind of, you know, we created our progression of instructional models earlier, and then the state came out with two different ways that we could actually implement phase two. They weren't calling it phase two or our distance learning plus, but they did give us two avenues. The first one is this idea of small cohorts, and I'll go into what that means. And the next one is around elementary waivers, and I'll explain what that means. So if you'll go to the next slide, let me start first with the small cohorts. So the state guidance around small cohorts, and you see what's underlined and italicized and bold, that comes directly from the state. You can, or we can, if you're with your direction. The state guidance enables, but it does not require the district to provide in-person specialized targeted supports for identified students. So that idea of enable but does not require, that comes directly from the state guidance. And then you may be asking, well, who are the identified students? And the state guidance outlines the student groups that are listed here. So students with disabilities, language learners, students in foster care, students experiencing homelessness and/or high-needs students. And so high-needs students could be students who have high absenteeism. It could be students who are younger students. That would be up to the district to determine that. But again, board, this enables you to offer in-person, but does not require you to do that for these student groups. And this is specific to specialized targeted supports for them. What are the parameters for those small groups? It's very clearly outlined. The small group cohort cannot exceed sixteen individuals, and those individuals include the adults, so the teachers, maybe instructional aides, and the students. So combined, no more than sixteen together in one room. Those students must stay together. They cannot mix with others. Again, this is specific for phase two distance learning plus. And then overall, at the school, the school cannot house more than, cannot exceed more than twenty-five percent of the school's enrollment capacity. Cohort mixing is restricted, and we have to have the physical distancing, the masks, the cleaning, and other safety measures. They must be maintained. To offer small cohorts, we do not need approval from local county health. But again, I want to emphasize for you, board, the guidance enables you to move on this, but it does not require you to do so. And the specialized targeted supports can look in different ways, however, the district deems it necessary to offer those supports. So that's the small cohorts. We have done some research to see which of our surrounding districts or similar districts to us are offering this. And I can tell you that for ours, it's specifically for our special ed, we have found about eight districts that have responded to us in San Bernardino County that are offering small cohort instruction. Many of them, the majority of them are in the mountain areas or the high desert. The one that is closest to us that we, again, that we know about is Ontario Montclair. But for the most part, we don't have a lot that are local that are offering small cohort instruction at this time. Or small, I'm sorry, small cohort specialized targeted supports at this time. That's one way that we could offer phase two distance learning plus. Next slide explains another way. And you may have heard about this, board. We mentioned it quite a while ago, but there's this, an elementary waiver that we could apply for as a district. The application must be developed in consultation with labor, parent, and community organizations. And once the application is developed, we have to publish that on the district website. Then we take that application and we submit it to our local Department of Public Health, and they will consult with California Department of Public Health to either approve our application or deny it. And this would only be for TK through sixth, sixth grade students and only sixth graders at an elementary campus. It would not, we could not use sixth grade at a middle school campus. Finally, on the elementary waiver, the local transmission rates need to be less than fourteen cases per one hundred thousand people. So you can, we're not there yet, but we could start a process for elementary waiver if indeed, boards, you you direct us to do so. So these are two ways that we can open in phase two. At the end of the presentation, these are the two ways that we're going to ask you if you want us to proceed forward in any of these two areas. Next slide, please. So now we want you to move from thinking about phase two, which was our, you know, specific for targeted groups of students. And that's the core of our students would still stay in distance learning plus. And now we want you to shift your thinking and to think solely about blended learning, which is our phase three. And we're going to walk you through all of the different moving parts. Dr. Flores, you've mentioned it multiple times. This is quite a complex puzzle. We're going to walk you through where we are with this complexity and some timelines on when we believe we will be done. And then at the end, we'll summarize all of that for you. So with that, I'll
Can I question about phase two?
Absolutely, Mr. Tillman.
I gotta get permission from the president.
And then I'm, and then I'm next.
Yeah, I know. And these, these two, as I share with you, board, they kind of go hand in hand, but we'll pause right here since it was, it was taken out of my hands. All right, Mr. Tillman, and we'll follow up with Dr. Flores.
Oh, I just think it's good that we talk about the phases individually, because when we roll them out, they probably will be in these phases. So for phase two, can you go back to the previous slide?
Would you like the small cohorts or the elementary waiver?
Just the one before this. The one I talked about, the number of cases per hundred thousand.
Okay, that's the elementary waiver, David. So Daniel, move it forward too, please.
It says that the local transmission rate needs to be less than fourteen cases per one hundred thousand. Where are we at right now?
Mr. Vatier, would you share that? That was what we just had, correct?
We're at eighteen, Danny, eighteen per hundred thousand.
I'm listening for the authority.
Well, I checked it.
And Mr. Tillman, in San Bernardino City, we're at twenty-nine point four. In San Bernardino Unified, we're at twenty point seven.
And I think that's important, just so we can see how far away we are from that. What I want to do is make sure that we, that we're all on the same page, parents, teachers, community, classified employees, about where we have to get, just based on the numbers. And that's a long way from fourteen. Just, just to be clear about that. And then, Dr. Menares, in this scenario for phase two, right now, I have students that qualify for phase two involved in distance learning, correct?
Correct.
And what are those class sizes for those students right now?
The, oh wait, I'm going to make sure I understand your question. So I, so can we go back one slide? Because now I think you're referring to the small cohorts, correct? So, so your question to me is, we have students that could be coming together in these small cohorts. That's your question?
Actually, but what, I'll just tell you where I'm going with this. I want to know that the students that you, that would be able to do phase two, are they in a class with twenty students, twenty-five students, thirty students? What, right now, in this is learning, how many students are in their class?
Oh, in distance learning, Mr. Tillman, we maintain the staffing ratio. So we, if they were, you know, a class of twenty-four, and that's the way we would do it in person, then that's what their distance learning is. So that's
Right, but you're saying here that you couldn't have more than sixteen students in a class.
Exactly, yes.
You're saying here, so that means that the same teacher wouldn't teach all these students?
So on this one, this, and we've talked through what this could look like. What, what, this is why we call it distance learning plus. Their daily instruction will still be through distance learning. Then they could have additional support outside of their daily instruction on campus. So their daily instruction would be at home with distance learning. And then they can have additional supports for smaller groups of kids. So then that we can, the teachers could break their class up and not bring all of the students in at the same time.
The big question for me, just real practical, because I talk to parents all the time. Would these students have the same teacher they have right now?
For the phase two, we do believe that we can do the same teachers because we may, so for the special needs students, we're thinking only are moderate to severe students. We've already been in conversation with them. Of course, we have to finish negotiations on this. So that is a piece that you'll see later that we have to do. But what we're looking at is it would be the same teacher offering the specialized targeted support.
And then for this group in phase two, what, what are you proposing? The time that school is going to start, and what time will it end?
So the, from what I know from our S, our moderate to severe teachers, they, their way they're doing their schedules, and this may not be a hundred percent of the teachers, but it's a good percentage of them. They actually do their distance learning in the afternoon. I'm not sure why they choose to do it there, but they do. And so their morning would be, you're probably asking like, how many hours? It may, a couple of hours, not a long time.
But, but the, I think the disconnect that we have is the importance of that time for parents. I've gotten complaints from parents that said, you sent me I've gotten complaints from parents that said, you sent me a survey saying, do I want my child to do blended? And I was assuming when you told me that, that when I said that my child is going to go back to school, that mean my child is going back to school for the whole day. So that you should have said, this is what the parents told me. You should have told me on your survey, do I want my child to go back to school from nine to twelve? Because that would, that would help me make the decision on whether or not I could allow my child to go back to school. Because the parents are telling me, I can't allow my kid to go back to school from nine to twelve because they have no way of being able to pick my child up at twelve o'clock. So 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 the survey that we did is not really telling the real story. Because two things happen here. One, you're saying that the there's a different time. And then I don't know about in terms of another key piece for a lot of these parents are are they going to be able to keep their existing teacher? So and it's it's important that we do that because the worst thing we could do is move on one of these phases and then have parents more upset. And and they feel like as bad as this is learning is, this is worse. That's what my real concern is.
Yeah, so so those concerns would not pertain to phase two. They do absolutely phase three of what you, you know, you shared.
Phase two too, because you're not talking about a full day of school.
Well, but we would, first of all, we can, we can only do the identified students. And we haven't called any of those families yet, but we would call them. We would tell them exactly what that looks like. We haven't gone there.
And for how many days during the week?
And we will tell them exactly what that looks like.
No, I'm asking, how many days during the week are we proposing to allow them to come back to the campus?
Oh, um, per, well, we want them in small groups. And so what the 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 teachers are proposing is about six students. So it depends on how many students they actually have in their class, right? So if it's an SDC class, they could have up to fourteen. So we're looking at those a week.
How many?
That's the max, two days a week. So if the if the teaching, if there, if it's so for an SDC SH class, the the max that they can have in their class, I believe, is fourteen students. So if we split that in half, well, the teachers are saying, we're saying about six students to come at a time. And then, you know, if they're medically fragile children, that's, this is not going to work for them. We need them to stay home, right? So it it is very individualized for our SH students. And then it would be up to the parent if they actually want them to come. And and really, you can think about the specialized target support as like tutoring, if you will. They're going to.
How many days a week?
Two, at the max.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Dr. Flores? Yes, Dr. Menares, could you go to the next slide? I I thought it was eighteen to a hundred thousand. So Mr. Vatier's data is even worse. So there's no way that we would even consider submitting a an elementary waiver at all. And as we see the numbers going up, I I had checked earlier and it was eighteen to a hundred thousand. So Mr. Vatier, when did you check? I must have checked this morning. Did you check this afternoon?
I I was right behind you. I check in the afternoon on Tuesdays.
Yeah, okay, I checked this morning. Okay, so so there's no way that we would even apply for a elementary waiver, given the data. And again, it's the data and also, you know, protecting our kids and our staff.
Absolutely. And and we just want the board to know that these options exist so that if if it comes back later, you you know, that you just know what you can do and what you can't do. So we are right there with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I think we'll move into phase three blended learning. And I believe Dr. Rodriguez will start the process for us.
Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. So as we were looking at what, as as we were planning for phase three, when the board deems it safe to do so, we wanted to start or we needed to start with the families and what the family desire was. And we know that there's many deciding factors, as you've mentioned before, family members who maybe live in the home, maybe lack of insurance. And so the the choice of whether or not to send their child to school is really something that's an intimate choice that the family needs to make. Once the family makes that choice and tells the district what their what their choice is, we need to know that in order to be able to plan around the needs of students. And so everything that we do is based on the needs of students. As we're preparing for the planning, we needed to make sure that we were had adequate supply of PPE as well as making sure that all safety procedures, temp checks, et cetera, were ready and available at our school sites. We had to ensure that our school sites, our facilities is up to par, making sure that we're able to physically distance students in six six feet and ready for students when they do come onto campus. We also need to know the number of students who are choosing or families who are choosing to have their students return so that we can determine the the adequate number of staff members that would be required for students to be in blended learning or to remain in distance learning. And then we have to make sure that all of our staff members are trained so that they are being maximally trained with everything that they need to know to keep children safe while they're in our care. Other things that we needed to consider, and so Dr. Flores spoke to the all the the complexities. We have to start looking at where our learning schedules are, determined whether or not how many students are going to come into school, determining nutrition. Are students going to get breakfast and lunch? Where are we going to serve that? Is it going to be a grab and go? Do will we have the ability to be able to serve lunches to students? We have to make sure that the students, when they do come to school, have their supplies that are individual to them so that they are not using other students' supplies to make sure that we are limiting the the spread of COVID. In addition to that, we have to make sure that those students who qualify for transportation are routed and are routed on the appropriate days that they are going to be coming to school. And then ensuring that we can keep them safe while they're at the bus stop and when they are actually boarding our buses. In addition to that, we've had to look at our CAPS programs before and after school programs that we know that many families utilize for their for their students to determine whether or not we can provide that service. And at this point in time, based on the the criteria of cohorting students, at this point in time, we are continuing to offer our CAPS programs in a virtual setting. Next slide, please. As of noon today, this is where our our family choices are are at at this point in time. So out of the forty eight thousand one hundred and four students that are enrolled in our district, we have responses from fifty seven percent. And that number has increased daily. And so as of from yesterday to today, we went up four percentage points based on our town hall meeting. So we're hoping that parents are getting that information that they need. And we will continue to provide additional information through FAQs as well as word of mouth. Our families are being called and we're answering questions as we can to help them make the best informed choice for their families. And as you can see of those results, we we're we're kind of split. So we have forty five percent of our student population who is requesting a blended learning environment. And forty, almost forty six percent of our families are requesting a a to remain in distance learning. And in response to the to the question that was posed earlier, is that it is a family choice. We we know that there are several factors in determining whether or not parents want their students to come back to school in the physical sense, as well as if they want them to re- remain at home and learning in that distance learning model. And so the survey, we did extend the deadline for our our families to November twentieth. And it's all hands on deck, making sure that we're making connections with families so that we can hear their voice. In the event that we have families who don't make the choice, they will remain in distance learning. Again, all of this is just in preparation for, if the board deems it safe to do so, to open whenever that decision is made. There was also a conversation about can a parent change their mind? Yes, they can. You know, there is nothing that says that they have to stay in that model. But there will be a process in which we will be able to move the student back to blended or into distance, because we need to make sure that we have students who are getting their instruction on a daily basis. And we don't want any students to fall through the cracks. So that's our information as of this point in time in regards to the learning model choice.
Dr. Rodriguez, are you doing this next slide or?
No, that's Dr. Funches.
Um, Dr. Wyatt, followed by Mr. Tillman?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Executive Cabinet, for the presentation and Dr. Rodriguez. And thank you for going back to that slide, because that's where my concerning comment was. No, obviously, we we still have about forty three percent of our families and students that haven't responded. And, you know, just with experience on my own with surveying, are we giving multiple methods of ways for our families to respond on the surveys? So hopefully, we could get a greater response rate. You know, I know if folks have to go online, sometimes it's a little bit more challenging. But are we reaching out to them and maybe being able to do the survey over the phone with them if they give a verbal response? And we can do the responses for them? Just wondering, so we could get as many folks to respond as possible.
Absolutely, great question. So yes, we we made the, there are multiple ways that a family can inform us of their choice. Of course, they can go and log into Aries through their parent portal. We also have the ability for parents to call their school and inform the school office of what their choice is. And in addition to that, we are also calling families. We we have district representatives as well as school representatives actually calling. And so as we get nearer to the twentieth, we will implement some home visits to catch those folks that we're unable to reach. And then after that point, we'll have kind of a grace period just to make sure that we're continuing to to do our outreach. And then at that point in time, our default will be distance learning so that we don't interrupt what their constant is at this time.
Okay, very good. And then my next question will be, and there may be a slide that covers this, is do we have any particular results for our staff? And are they, are we surveying them as well? So I'll be covering that during our next slide. Very good, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I I, you know, I I think on the the survey, the somehow we have to inform the parents of what, be more specific in terms of the number of days we're talking about. We're asking the parents if you want your child to come back to and the amount of time that they're going to be on campus. Because without that, if and, if they're going to be able to keep the same instructor. And then the board needs to be informed that if we do a blended model, will some of the students who are doing distance learning, will they have to be assigned a different teacher than what they have right now? Because if a teacher goes back to the site, then that means that the all those other students that are going to remain in distance learning are going to have to be assigned a new teacher. Those those, that type of information, we have to have before we pull the trigger. The worst thing to do would be to say, based on this survey, these parents have accept, want their students to return to site on a blended learning. But in the in the end, they don't have all that clear information in terms of the length of the school day, how many school days, and whether or not their their child is going to keep the same teacher. And I I I heard something, and it may be wrong because it was just public comments. But a lot of times, the the information in public comments is accurate. The a teacher mentioned something about seniority dictating who's going to do distance learning versus who's going to come on site. And they quoted me as saying that teachers that are high risk will not have to come back on site. And and I mean, I need to look at the board and say, I don't, are we ever going to get to a point where we're telling a teacher who's a high risk teacher over sixty five ailments, all the things that put them in a high risk class? Are we suggesting that we're going to force them to come back? Or even, are we saying that?
I don't believe we've said that.
And and has that been taken into account in determining what the capacity is for any type of on campus learning?
And that's a great question, because that segues into Dr. Funches's piece around the teacher choice.
So but just so you don't lose sight of the survey, I I think the survey needs to that's the the parents to be informed in the survey of whether or not, I mean, the survey could be as simple as, would you want your child to come back to to participate in learning, even if they don't keep the same? And and I would like to have the survey saying, if you maintain distance learning, would you be upset if your child doesn't get to keep the same teacher? Because they may go back to campus to accommodate blended learning. Because what I don't want to do, to be quite frank, is is to do something that we think parents want. And I have more parents mad at me then than they are to me now. I mean, I got parents that hate me right now because we're doing distance learning. And I can accept that. I don't want more parents hate me because I make this change. The least amount of hate, that's where I want to go.
We're with you.
Well, again, there's some more information to this. And I think that's what got us here is because we, one needs the other. We need to know where we are with the teach, with the teacher's availability as opposed to how many of the students. And I I do agree, there's additional information that's needed. But I think at the time, when we were talking about gathering information, it became a si- a survey of who wants to come back, who didn't. I think we had even three choices. Now we're further into the weeds of of trying to identify some additional things. But I think as of now, is it you, Dr. Funches? You're going to start talking on the slide about what we looked at there?
Thank you, board. Thank you, President Rogers. I will talk briefly or give an overview about the process for preparing to bring our workforce back and how that aligns with the choices that parents are making. So as you know, everything starts with negotiations, meaning we're working and we'll continue to work with our various labor groups to reach agreement for working conditions upon the safe return of our employees, which includes safety protocols, as you know, personal protective equipment, scheduling and possible assignment changes based on student need. But this is all contingent upon when it's deemed safe to come back. So in the negotiations process, we don't want to get in front of that. We are talking right now about how we look at teacher assignments and what the process is for that. So I'll talk a little bit about that, Mr. Tillman, in terms of employee safety as well. And so as we prepare to bring employees back, we are deploying another employee survey. And we waited specifically for Thursday so that we can gather information yesterday and tonight. And the and the survey or the intent of the survey is for our employees to help us determine necessary, sorry, necessary supports and accommodations for those who might need them, such as telework or assessing the proper leave, should they need leave or or should it be necessary? The employee survey will also provide us with pertinent information on employee availability for in-person learning model. So in that survey that we are deploying, we will ask, are you considered at risk or increased risk for developing COVID illness or severe COVID illness according to the CDC guidelines? And the reason that's important, because it will allow us to work with those particular employees to accommodate some of those factors and place them in positions or assignments that will keep them safe if they aren't able to return to in-person learning or on-campus positions or in department positions. And then, as you know, we've surveyed our parents also, which we've just been speaking about. And how that ties in to the staffing is because our parent preference for keeping students in distance learning and or opting for blended learning will allow us to know how many scholars or how many students are requesting each model, whether that be in person, which is what we call blended, or the distance learning. And once we have those numbers or able or become able to ascertain the numbers for both both models, then we are able to effectively determine the number of staff that we need to effectively staff for both of those models. Meaning some of our employees may. Meaning some of our employees may support our in-person model or the blended, and some of our district employees may support our distance learning model. And it just depends on the number of students within both of, both of those models. Uh, and then finally, I just, I just wanted to say, we know this process will be very complex. It's a, it's a it's an arduous task that we've already embarked on behind the scenes. So we will need patience and understanding as we work through these processes. But it is our goal, I want to show you that it is our goal to provide all of our scholars with excellent learning results. No matter which learning option they choose. And also, it is our goal to effectively communicate and value our employees as we work through these processes. So once again, we start with negotiations. We are deploying a survey for our employees about their health and wellness and, and how that might affect their ability to return. Uh, the parent survey numbers will also give us an indication of how we staff both models. And then we begin the process of staffing, and that will also be worked through the negotiations process for determining how we staff each model. Mike, you have any questions for me or clarifications needed?
I don't see a new, uh, Mr. Tillman, is that a new comment? I don't think so.
No, no.
No, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, Board. So the next part that we want you to be aware of is, um, there is a lot of training behind, um, preparing to enter into phase three. And so we have some training topics up here. This training is training for administrators, our certificated and our classified staff, right? Because our schools are going to look very different. And so we anticipate three hours of training, um, for all of these different groups on how to, what this physical layout looks like, what are the implications? You can imagine a teacher entering their classroom and seeing these classrooms set up very differently than the way they left them, um, at the end of the school year. And, and helping them, and, and they need to know that they can't move desks, and there's just some guidance that we have to have in place or that we have, that then we need to train on. So there's the adjustments to the physical layout and, um, the corresponding changes in routines. That's about three hours of training. We anticipate about an hour of training with hygiene, cleaning and sanitation procedures. Um, this is all at the school site. Uh, three hours of training on screening, monitoring and physical health procedures. And then, of course, where there's gonna be some transportation processes and procedures. The idea of ingress and regress, that's, that's included in the physical layout of the facility. So, um, and then the, the two that are shaded in the gray, those, um, we, we anticipate that we can do that training once we actually bring students back. So we don't have to do those before students come back, but we would wanna do it within the first couple of weeks. So what we're, we want to do so that we don't train too far in advance is when we have the date by which we would open for in-person, we would need two weeks prior to that to make sure that all the training happens. And we would work with our administrators so that they can then work with their staff. Um, and we use existing structures, MOU times, staff meetings, um, just the regular workday. We wouldn't expect our staff to come outside of the workday. But in total, it's about ten hours of training. This also, these trainings align with the board policy that you put in place as well. So, and they are in alignment with the state and federal guidelines. So about two hours, I'm sorry, two weeks of training prior to, um, offering in-person learning. Um, our next slide will be, uh, Maria Espinoza, she'll talk to you about transportation.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members and Cabinet. My name is Maria Espinoza. I'm the Director of Student Transportation. And the following are the safety measures that will be in place to keep our students safe when it's safe to re, to return and resume busing. Uh, face masks. As a state mandate, face masks must be worn by all students, and this includes our bus-riding babies. Uh, the buses will be equipped with spare masks, or for should a student arrive without a mask, one will be provided. Students must grab onto the handrail as they step into the bus. Therefore, hand sanitizer will be provided to students before boarding. Physical distancing seating will be provided to ensure we maintain adequate distance between students, which also means we'll be reducing our busing capacity by just a little over two-thirds. In the aisles where students are not seated, windows will be open to ensure ventilation. Buses will be sanitized after every leg of service. This includes at the transfer sites as well. An attendant will be assigned to each bus to help with the hand sanitizing, the seating of students and the actual sanitizing of the buses. Uh, now, due to the reduction in seating, we will be combining magnet and capping students to both maximize our seating capacity and reduce the ride time of our babies. When it's safe to do so, we will be ready and we look forward to servicing our families and to suing our babies back on buses. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, hold, hold on a second. It looks like this was Alice Medina?
Yeah, no, no, I do, I have with regards to, um, the temperature checks. Are they gonna be checking the temperatures as the students come in, come on the bus?
So one of our biggest concerns with conducting temperature screenings is what to do with our babies, um, at the bus stop. A good majority of our students, they either walk on their own or they're dropped off by their parents. So if in case we do have a student that's running a temperature, what would we do with them? And what would we do with the remainder of the students on the bus? Uh, one requirement is going to be that parents screen their students before they're sending them to school. And then, of course, the second screening will take place once we arrive to school. So, uh, we feel that along with the other safety measures that we have in place, um, should help keep our babies safe.
Um, I see, I see a potential risk only because, um, you know, not all families have thermometers to be checking. They don't have the temperature checks to be checking. Um, so if there was, I mean, it would be ideal to do it before they come on the bus. But doesn't mean that you're gonna refuse and maybe have a designated area so that way you can have families um, come over to pick them up by the time the bus arrives before they enter the building. Uh, there has to be an additional procedure beforehand, only to take the measure to make sure that they're um, not potentially in, you know, getting other students pick.
We, we can definitely explore that a little further. Ms. Medina?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Board, you've heard, um, the, where we are with the various components, our PPE, our physical distancing setup, um, the, the parent survey, the staffing, the transportation. There are additional considerations that we have been thinking about as a district. Um, and as we try to figure out when would be the earliest that we could offer any kind of in-person um, learning. And so here are some of them. We, um, HR is going to need time to coordinate the teacher assignments to align with the parental choice. And Board, you've mentioned that already, the complexity of that. So we're looking at about forty-five weeks to do that. Our, our secondary schools are going to have to work on their master scheduling for phase three. And we're saying five to seven weeks, and we, I'm sure our high school principals are taking a gasp because that's, that's a big lift. Um, but they, they need time to do that. We have already promised our families. Uh, uh, it's been a while since we've promised our families that we would get them at a minimum four weeks of notification for a start date. So we wanna maintain that commitment. We recognize that our educators need time to go back into their classrooms and prepare for whatever that start date would be, right? So you can imagine the regular school year, many teachers go into their classrooms, kinda dust things off, um, take, you know, to get things set up. And then we give them days to actually set their classrooms up. We want to, we're not gonna be able to give them actual days, but we wanna give them windows of time by which they can go into their classrooms and they can start setting up. So we're saying three to four weeks there. Um, and then we want to, of course, finalize negotiations. Um, we are hopeful that negotiations will be finalized by December eighteenth. And then a final consideration for, um, all of this is the winter break that's going to come into play. So winter break starts December twenty-first. We don't believe that it's a smart idea to have anybody go back on campus before that because then they would be off for three weeks. So that's just a natural break. And we also don't believe that we should have, um, in-person learning happen the minute we come back from winter break. Um, because we would have had distance learning and then come right back into, um, uh, in-person. We feel like there should be a little bit of a cushion of a window there. So with that, we have, um, our Gantt chart, which, uh, we just learned. Um, thank you, Ginger. Uh, Anteletos for teaching this new phrase to us. Um, but we've seen all this. Now we know what it's called. I'm sure many of you board members know this term. Um, and what we've done, and we've summarized what this will look like in terms of the readiness preparation. So we understand there are many variables beyond this readiness list that I'm sure you've brought up and that are in your mind. We've heard some of them. There's a concern of those, of our students who live in multi-generational homes. Um, there's a concern about our families that may not have access to healthcare, um, if somebody does get sick. And then there's that concern that we've heard you talk about and we've read about as well, the potential of opening and then having to close down again because due to an outbreak and just the challenges of the uncertainty, right? And so they're all uncertainties and they're questions, and we're trying to to figure out how to balance it and how to support you, Board, in balancing that. It really comes down to a, a level of risk tolerance. Uh, we know that leading during uncertainty, that's part of transformational leadership. I wanna thank you, Dr. Hill. Uh, we couldn't have planned this any better. This idea of transformational leadership, you know, I did some research on it. And what are the, the key behaviors that the leaders need to show during, um, during times of uncertainty? And it's to guide, it's to encourage, and it's to enable. And you, Board, have been doing that for your community and for us as a district. And so we thank you for guiding, encouraging and enabling us to do what needs to, and to be flexible during this, um, this, this time of uncertainty. Um, at this point, we want to ask you, um, and I'll go through this summary, but at the end of the summary, we do want to know if you want, you know, if you feel comfortable with the opening date that we're proposing for phase two to be in late January, and if you want us to, um, to prepare for an elementary waiver. So let me again just talk through the summary, and then we can talk about, um, the, the two asks that we have for you. So we heard tonight that our family preferences, um, will be done by November twentieth. We heard clearly that we have to make sure our families know what they were, um, actually agreeing to. So we will make sure that we make that clear. Um, then the staffing comes into play. You, you could see how it starts to overlap with family preferences. Everything gets triggered by, um, what our families want for their students. The staffing and the master scheduling will take place simultaneously. Our master scheduling will need more time. Once we get that work going with the staffing and the master scheduling, then we can start the routing for the transportation. Transportation needs, um, six to eight weeks to complete that routing process. Towards the end of the transportation, we would start the training that will be in the last two weeks. And during the month of January, um, once winter break was over, of course, we would then have our teachers, um, be allowed. We'd have our principals create, um, staggered schedules to have them start coming in and preparing their classrooms and and just getting in the mindset of being back on campus as well as, oh, um, notifying our families so they know what the earliest we could, we would open. And so you can see up on top that our earliest date that we believe we can open for phase two, so that's for the identified small cohorts of students. They would still get distance learning, and then they would get above and beyond supports um, by their, the above and beyond supports for our, our, our special needs, um, moderate to severe students would be case carriers unless they can't come in, and then we will make those accommodations. Um, for our other students, it would be additional supports that we could have with resident subs or, um, other people that would be interested in just providing kind of like a tutorial, if you will. Um, the earliest we believe that we could offer, uh, phase three would be the end of January, very, very beginning of February. And that's the earliest that we believe we could offer it. So with that, Board, we're done with this part of the presentation. The last piece is the video, and we'll hold that for the very end.
Thank you so much. So, so we will pause here and I will, will begin to call upon the board members. But I'll make this comment because I usually make the comments later, but just, I'm challenged again when I see readiness and I hear the word opening, and I just really, and, and this is what we've talked as a board. We wanna be clear, um, with our listening audience. We wanna be clear with our parents. Readiness is one thing. What you took us through is what, everything we need um, to have happen, and hopefully that it happens on time, the right way, and all those other factors. But at the end of the day, even in our readiness, we find ourselves in January looking at the February calendar. But we don't wanna misconstrue the words opening with readiness because they're two different things. And so, Board, as we begin to make, like, as I said, this was a very detailed presentation of all the things that we have talked through over the months to land here about what we need if, in fact, our students are on a campus. But there's a, there's a slide that's very important that Eric Batier gives us every single time that guides everything around what we hear, what we do. And so that is still when it's safe to do so. That's just, that is the guiding factor. And we have to speak with clarity, not the what ifs and how about this. We really want to give the message clear. We've said it before, we do want our, our students back when it's safe. You know, after everything else. And this is a readiness. This is a readiness. This means the district is saying they're gonna have everything they need for someone to step foot on the campus and begin to do in person. It has nothing to do with saying we can look in the future and know that on January, whatever day, everything is gonna align. So I do see, um, Mr. Tillman, you are, I believe, in the comments?
Yes, um, you know, the, the date on here is very optimistic. I think when we look at the numbers in terms of where we're at in the purple and the amount of time we got to, um, uh, stay in the purple and then transition to the red. I, I'm gonna make a bold comment. I think what we should do is put all the tables and the desks and the chairs back in the classroom, get rid of all the dividers, all the partitions, and, um, hope that we'll have the vaccine in March. They say you have to take two doses, take the two doses of the vaccine, distance learn until we can go back to school regularly. And, uh, so when we tell folks to go back to school, they're going back to school the way we used to know it. And the good thing is with the talk about the vaccine, uh, we, that's what will happen. So it looks as though next school year, it'll be back to normal. If, if, if we really get to a point where we're talking about February and March, it doesn't make sense to do uh, a hybrid. To me, because it's really gonna take time. It, it sounds like I'm being facetious, but it is gonna take time to restore the classrooms back to normal. So if we had the potential to do that, I think we should do that now, continue distance learning. And whatever the earliest time is that we can get back into the classroom normally because of the vaccine, I think that's what we should do. But I don't think we should even entertain doing a hybrid. It's, uh, right now, as bad as distance learning is, uh, we know how bad it is. We've adapted to it. And I think we should continue with that until we can truly go back to school, uh, open uh, as normal. And I, I would, I mean, the board has to decide tonight, but I think within the next couple of meetings, we should make the decision so we can give the staff direction on prepping everything to go back to a time, uh, when it's like it used to be. And, and to tell you the truth, it's not that bad. You know, it would only be, we, we did this in March of last year. So if we actually get the vaccine rolling out to regular folks in March and April, then we, we shut down for a year, and we saved lives the way that we did it. Uh, however bad the numbers are in the county, in the school district, however purple they are, they're not that purple because of us. And, uh, the thing that the, the other people across the nation don't understand, because they're kinda slow, if you open the schools, your numbers are gonna go up. And they act like they get surprised when they say, we opened up the schools and our numbers are up, so we're gonna shut down the schools again. If we open our schools and bring back fifty thousand kids, the number, numbers are gonna go up unless we have the vaccine. The good thing is the vaccine is there. So my suggestion is, we just stop talking about doing this hybrid because the vaccine is here and plan on going back to school as normal as soon as possible. When we go back to the campuses, we should be going back to full classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Dr. Flores?
Mr. Tillman, I agree with you. I, I totally agree with you. I think that, uh, we would be putting our kids and, and staff in harm's way until we get the vaccine. And, um, we're not gonna be sure. And, and like you said, and I've, I've read all these. I read a lot, and I read the newspapers, the New York Times, the LA Times, the Guardian. I mean, the Wall Street Journal, uh, every morning, uh, and it is scary. Uh, and, uh, Chicago Times as well. Uh, and uh, Chicago Times as well. And so it is, I think, the most prudent, prudent um, suggestion, uh, Mr. Tillman, that you have. Uh, that we stay in distance learning. And also, you know, our, our CSUs have decided to stay in distance learning. Our community colleges made that decision a long time ago. And um, you know, safety, not just safety, but um, you know, our lives uh, are in, in the balance of all of this and we have to remember that. And um, so I would, Madam President, would we agendize this for next, for next um, board meeting so that we can make a definitive decision for our, for our uh, parents, our community and our um, our teachers and staff?
Um, I believe we could, um, but I do want to hear from the other board members. Um, not only was it, I mean, I, I hear, like I said, this, this calendar is still looking me in the face and says February, which means the school year I think ends in, you know, June or February. Right, so it would be, but my concern is, um, you know, I can't predict what 20, the rest of the school year would be. Um, but we know that this one looks like it's at, it's at a conclusion, but I want to hear from the other uh, board members.
That would be my recommendation to agendize it. Thank you very much.
Stay with you. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Dr. Menares and the rest of the team, just want to thank you for another great presentation. I appreciate the updates. I learn a lot each time. I like the summary of readiness preparation and um, uh, I know you, you folks have put a lot of work into it. And uh, it is so appreciated. And uh, it, it's, it's good because at least we know where the train is going. And that's very important, not only for the staff, but for our students and for our parents. So I, I just wanted, I just wanted to thank you for what you are doing and knowing whatever our decision is, it's good to know that uh, uh, by February, you'll be ready to, it will be, it'll be ready for phase uh, what is it, phase three? But uh, uh, other than that, I think it's always good to prepare and hope for the best. And, and of course, you know, we don't know what the uh, next wave of uh, if the virus is going to cause for us. Nor are we going to know what the temperature and anything else is going to be. So while we wait and see what happens, um, I'm glad to know that whatever decision we make that you're, you're planning for the best happen in February. So I appreciate that for you and from you and your team. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
I am not seeing any other comments. So um, hopefully all the board members have had an opportunity to weigh in. Um, what I will say at this point is please, yes, make note, we will go ahead and I agendize this discussion to um, talk about the remainder of the school year, which is very important. And then any other additional information that we need to weigh in, what it could look like after. And I'm not seeing any other comments, so thank you very much. We will.
Yes, and we'll end with our video. We continue to offer distance learning and, and our teachers are getting better and better um, every day.
When you go to school, you don't just go to school. You play games. You learn how to make art. You dance. You learn about culture and you fight for justice, peace and love in the world.
Well, it looks like we're going to have a great day today. Let's take a look at our weather map.
By looking at equations, I can tell that there is one solution, no solution, or infinite.
Here is the evidence that I'm gonna go to children.
Tinker Dad is something where you could bring ideas in your mind and make them reality.
You can maintain a perfect weight for yourself, like what you want and also you don't get any bad diseases like heart disease, diabetes and high cholesterol.
Any process that required voting, like elections and lawmaking. And because they didn't have that with the British, they wanted to have it fair so they could all have equal representation.
A French soldier is carrying an American flag. So the French is supporting who?
Eight point four times one is eight point four. One times two is two. So that is an improper fraction.
Six, two, four, four, and it's one, two, three, four. These are fingers of love.
Is there energy in this system? Let's try something stronger. What if we use the actual sun? Is there energy in the system?
And you always get something like this.
Hopefully in the upcoming year, we will have a vaccine on COVID-19 will become a history lesson like the Black Death. Until then, stay home and stay safe. I'm John McDonald signing off on PRPA Live at News.
That was fabulous. Thank you. Leave it to the students. They can always bring us where we need to be. And so again, to, to the district and all your hard work. Again, it is what helped us make the decisions that we have to make, which are the hard decisions. But you have definitely provided us a lot of information and I think we will definitely be able to move to a, a, a good place at our next meeting. So thank you again. And I am now going to move us to eight point one, learning continuity and attendance plan. And I don't think there's any, is there any additional information on this? I know everyone had an opportunity to look through it.
Board, we're prepared to answer any questions you may have about the administrative report that was uh, in the body of the agenda.
Madam President, um, this is Dr. Flores. I didn't have time to write it in.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to know when your timeline is uh, for addressing uh, the issues that were pinpointed. And uh, I, I, I don't know if I missed the deadline uh, on that or not, but um, just wanted to know that. Dr. Volkmer.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. I'm going to ask Mrs. Applegate to respond, please.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Volkmer, and thank you, uh, Dr. Flores, for the question. The five suggestions that are just that, suggestions have already been addressed. And um, as you can see, they were minor suggestions. Um, we did not need to make any changes, but we went ahead and, and took the suggestions and, and made some changes, minor changes on all five. But they've been done already. They're completed.
And they have been submitted?
Uh, they were here for your review. Um, we were directed to have you review it in a public meeting. And we then take them right back as soon as you review.
Okay, so we, we, we met them all, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? That was great news, definitely. All right, there's no other, and I don't, we don't need to take any action on this, right? Or do we?
That is correct. You do not need to take any action.
All right. Well, thank you for your great work. All right, nine point O reports and comments. Nine point one, let me begin to look in the chat. Nine point one brings us to board members. Well, having said, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, and, and uh, superintendent staff, uh, thank you for the presentation uh, to the um, employee staff and parents and community that reached out to me about concerns and issues. I want to uh, thank you. Uh, and, and continues to uh, encourage everyone to be patient. Uh, where there is light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, I think that we as a district have made the right decisions pertaining to uh, COVID-19. There have been some disasters across our uh, country, including uh, people dying. And that's been our biggest concern is the safety of all involved. And I think that uh, we made the right decisions. We understand how important education is. And we understand this is not the best environment for education. Uh, but the district has been amazing in the way that we responded. You know, I laugh because people say negative stuff, but they don't ever say positive stuff. They had a list of all the school districts who uh, and, and, and socio-economically poor districts who didn't have devices and didn't have connectivity. So they listed the ones that are having trouble getting it, but they didn't list us as being one of those districts that all go, uh, we may have a lot of people that live in poverty. We um, literally have worked towards closing the uh, digital divide. And we started a long time ago and that's what has benefited us. So it's not the best of circumstances, but we've done a great job of where we're at right now. And so I, I just want to thank everybody and, and, and to the parents, I know it's tough. But even by me suggesting that we continue distance learning until we can come back full um, time, the exact way we did education in the past and that we really appreciate now because of COVID. I uh, it's only because we're so close. Uh, in, in order to to put a new system in place, and that's what we do, be doing and learning, it would take a year to do it right. So we've taken this time to perfect to the best uh, of our abilities, the distance learning. And I think we should just continue that. And if the, the vaccine is out in March, then as soon as we're able to open the doors and, and fully staff students and bring them back on campus, then that's what we should do. And it, it looks as though we'll be able to have real graduations if the timeline is right. So I'm excited right now. So I just uh, hope that we all continue to be patient in this environment and uh, move forward and hopefully Madam President agendizes it and we'll be able to tell everyone that that's what our plan is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I want to thank uh, the cabinet and all our staff that has uh, worked tirelessly uh, so that we can uh, serve our students and our, our teachers uh, as well for all their hard work and all our administrators for all that they're doing. Um, and Dr. Menatis, who created that video? It was just fabulous. It was incredible.
That was secondary Ed.
Oh, was it? Uh huh. Well, I want to thank them uh, for their efforts um, because um, that was spectacular capturing. All the different nuances, all the different aspects. I'm sure there's many more. Um, and like Danny said, you know, we, we, this board uh, started closing the digital divide about five years ago. And uh, and you know, unbeknownst to us that that's what we were going to be doing uh, in terms of distance learning. And I, I agree with Danny, uh, you know, why don't we perfect our distance learning uh, and get better at it. Uh, and once the vaccine is here, then we can all return to some normalcy, right? And some, instead of, you know, trying, I think, I think, you know, all the things that you shared, I think it's a logistical nightmare. A, a, all the moving parts, I, I don't know. I don't think we're going to be able to do, I mean, it's, I think that's what we desire, but I don't know if we can pull it off, you know? Uh, there's too many things, uh, too many unknowns uh, in terms of, you know, protecting our, our children, our safety. Uh, you know, uh, everything. But anyway, I wanted to thank uh, everyone for that. Um, and also um, I wanted to give a shout out to uh, our president uh, because she's going to be on a, a panel for the California Latino School Boards Association on November the 12th. It's on the Virtual Unity Conference and she's going to be addressing building resilient leaders and students. And it's from nine to I think 10:30, 11:00. Uh, and uh, it's um, if you want to go on it, it's CLSBA.org and it's there so that you can click on it. I'll say it again, CLSBA.org. And you can uh, you know, um, click on it for uh, so you can, it's free, you don't have to pay for it. And, and the featured speaker is going to be uh, James Edward Olmos. And he'll be talking about unlocking the power of learning through filmmaking and it's uh, children um, in uh, fourth grade, third grade through high school. And so it's the Cinema Youth uh, Youth uh, uh, conference or committee, uh, I think it's conference, a cinema youth conference uh, that will be featured. But anyway, I um, I'm so happy that you're going to do that, President Rogers. Because of your article that you wrote on leadership. I, I know you're going to like motivate everybody. So thank you so much for agreeing to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, one of the things as you were doing the presentation, I was just wondering, you know, we, we have town hall meetings and if you have 200 people, no, that's good. But we have 48,000 students. And I was just wondering if maybe through communications or marketing that we could do something with the, maybe a card, a four by six card on what parents need to know. And maybe uh, come up with some uh, partnership with our supermarkets because one, one of the places parents go, they do go to the supermarkets. So get them in our, especially in our major supermarkets. And even the mom and pops if we can. But uh, something that we can have, something on the wall or someplace to say what, what parents need to know about schools. Or what parents need to know to make students, something of that nature. But if we could do something like that, it won't be anything clumsy. It would be just a small uh, colorful card uh, with information on. So So, you know, parents, parents, and then I'm sure we could meet the needs of at least 40,000 of our parents. But it's a suggestion, but if we could do that, that would be great. I had the opportunity today to listen to Admiral Moore, who spoke about his schooling, his involvement with the military, and the motivation bits he had for our youth. And I just wanted to thank Chief Polino and Assistant Chief Donahue for the invitation. And I, I just adore that so much. And I hope that's recorded so that we can share it with our schools. And I certainly want to thank our staff. Everybody's been doing a good job. I was so glad to hear the CSEA rep talk about people working in the warehouses especially because not only are they receiving stuff, but you know, they got to be in real good shape to be moving all the boxes and things of that nature. So while we appreciate all of our staff members, we sure want to give a special to the people who are doing the lifting and carrying and moving and things of that nature. And other than that, I want to just say Happy Veterans Day to all of our employees who are veterans and significant others. And just hope tomorrow, all of you enjoy your day off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Dr. Wyatt?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Dr. Hill, for saying that about Veterans Day. Definitely Happy Veterans Day to our veterans that are out there. And definitely thank you to our staff for the wonderful presentations we've had today. We know you've put in a tremendous amount of work trying to come up with solutions to, you know, not just distance learning, but if we were to come back to in-person teaching and learning, how could we do that? And I know that a lot of times we're just saying, we're coming up with as many different solutions as we can, and and then somebody comes up with another question about what about this? What about that? And I don't, I don't think we can answer every one of those darn questions. And, and you know, thank you to the families and parents and staff that came to the town hall meeting last night. And that was a snapshot, I believe a snapshot of really the majority of our, our families out there that have just so many questions. So many questions. And you know, Dr. Hill, I think that was a great idea about an information card as well. As much information as we could get to our families, I think is very important for them to be informed on what some of our potential plans look like. You know, my concern is, is when we look at our parent surveys, family surveys, we have 54% around that, I believe, of families and students that want some sort of in-person teaching. And we know that safety is first and foremost, but gosh darn, you know, they're reaching out and saying this is what we want, and you know, we represent our community as well. So that's a tough decision for us to make. It really is. In order for us to come back, and I know everybody's talking about, well, the vaccine's supposed to be come out, the vaccine's supposed to be come out. How many people are really going to get that vaccine? Let's ask that question as well. There's a lot of people I, I'm talking to that say, well, vaccines come out, but I'm not getting it. You know, I don't want to be the guinea pig. I don't want to go first. Maybe somebody else should go first. So I don't think we should put a lot of, you know, hope into that either. I mean, don't get me wrong. I think it's great that a vaccine's being developed, but what's the efficacy of that vaccine when it does come out? Well, you know, that's a question we got to ask, and how many people are really going to do it? So, you know, there, there's so many scenarios that we could throw out there, and none of them, I think, are going to be 100% accurate or what people want to hear. So we do have to have multiple plans, I think, moving forward. We could agendize our plan coming back. I think it's still premature saying that, yeah, we could come back this day. We're not coming back at all. So, I mean, that's my opinion. I, I, you know, my opinion about how I feel with this right now, and I want to talk about learning loss. The state came out and said, we're going to do standardized testing, folks. We're going to do standardized testing. It's going to be abbreviated shortened test. But we're going to find out real soon, you know, in grades three, eight, and 11, how our students are doing. And we need to be ready for that reality. When those test scores come out and come back, yeah, it might not be this year or anytime soon, but we're going to find out how well did we do, or you know, how much more we have to improve. Because th- these are tough times in regards to teaching and learning. And, and you know, my hopes go up to everybody that we're doing great and kids are excelling, but we need to be ready for when those results come out as well. And how are we going to prepare our kids for standardized testing and how are we going to administer those tests as well? So there's still a lot of challenges ahead of us. And I will say this, I know we have an amazing team in place. We have an amazing board that cares about our kids and our families, our community. So I mean, there's so many layers to this, folks, and gosh, the hours I've been invested into this, and I know just the time and the stress as well that goes along with it. So families, please, I heard somebody say be patient. I think we're all being very patient with this, but also our level of anxiety gets high too. As the year goes on and as we get closer to the holidays and when we come back, and then we start talking about graduation at the end of the year. Those days will all be here soon. So staff, continue the great job you're doing. You know, I applaud you. And gosh darn, you're, you're in tough seats as you are, trying to come up with these plans. And, and again, just painstaking hours that we know you're investing into this. And thank you again for coming up with many, many different plans for the many different what is. So thanks again.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to give a shout out to my fellow veterans and hope they celebrate and, and think about the greatness of our country that we have and the freedoms that that are afforded by those who have served. And, you know, from, from me to your families, I thank you for your service. And I want to thank the team, again, the SBCUSD leadership teams and everyone that's been involved in, in this use consternations on various choices for parents, you know, it, they're almost infinite. And, you know, you know that no matter what we do, no one can guarantee your safety. You know, 100%, nobody can. We can make preparations and we can do all that we know to, to implement those safety precautions and things. But no one can, can actually ensure your safety. And, but that's up to you. And so hopefully, we'll provide options when it's, it's right to do so and when we're allowed to do so to open up our schools as we, we see fit. And it will still be up to the parents to choose whether and, and the staff as to whether or not they choose to come back under that environment. You know, I heard a lot of the public comments say, gee, is the choice taken away from us? I don't think anyone on the board or anyone in the staff, any one of our staff has said that people will be forced to choose a specific option. I just want to make sure that's, that's clear because it obviously wasn't for several of the, the public comments. People who submitted the public comments. So perhaps, Dr. Volkmer, you might want to just make a comment on that. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. I see you, Ms. Rosales Medina, but I don't see you in the chat. Are you ready? Are you going to speak?
Yes, no, I just wanted to say ditto as everybody else. I was just waiting until the end. You know, the reality is, is we are in a, in a difficult situation, but I am proud of the fact that, as Danny Tillman, Mr. Tillman mentioned, we are ahead of the game when it comes to technology with the devices for our students. And so we, we have been with this board, trying to be as much as we can understanding the struggles that our communities and our students are facing, our parents are facing, to be on top of it. And, and it shows what the reality is that we are, we do have our families and our students prepared with technology, with the computers and the devices they need. And is there more that we can do? Yes. But I know that compared to other districts and similar situations, we're ahead of the game. So I, I do appreciate our district, our staff, superintendent, deputy superintendent, and, and the remainder of the board. So thank you so much for your help.
Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge also to our veterans. I actually have a veteran in my home that handed me his 20-year, finally made it paper two days ago. So I am happy about that. And you know, that's a, that's a good thing. And definitely, it's been a long time coming, but I continue to push him. Don't tell him I said it. But I do also want to just again commend our board, Forward Thinking Board. It's just a pleasure to, to be a part of this group because there's a lot of firsts, as we like to talk about and have talked about in the last few months. First, I mean, that's probably the reason why, I'd like to think, you know, I, I have some good knowledge, but that's a lot of what I talk about when I'm on panels and being called is all the first things that is, is happening here in this district. And I'm so very, very proud to be representing and a part of this board. And having said that, you know, our board is unique, as I've shared with others, we, we, we work together as a team. Everybody is all a part of the one big family. And I don't know, because the days get kind of blurred together in the board meetings, but I know we have a, a face on here, Annie Applegate. And I, I want to say, I don't know if she was here prior, but I do want to acknowledge her again because she is here with the team and our team has grown. And we're just, we're just proud of how we just come together and we move forward. And you don't even see the dips in anything. It just continues to move forward. And you guys are all very, very valuable to the success of us as board members. So I appreciate you. I do also want to give, I can't see her on my screen, but I want to give a shout out also to Ginger. I've been seeing these minty spotlights here and there coming up, and that is a great thing. I, I had thought several months ago in the midst of other things, how we can highlight those, where are they now? You know, and she must have been reading my mind because I like seeing that as well, because we do such amazing things. And in the midst of COVID in this virtual world, we've been able to get out a lot of information that sometimes we wouldn't have maybe gotten around to. But it's flirt, floating, floating around out there in cyber world, and we certainly appreciate it. Just like I appreciate our parent champions. I'll say it again and keep saying it. Our parents are on the front line right now, and we want to support them every way that we can. Listening to them last night was again very helpful to the decisions that we have to make because they're in it, and they're in it to win it, and we're in it to win it along with them. So we appreciate you, parents. Let's keep working together. And lastly, it is National Psychologist Week, and we do want to acknowledge them because we know that work has also increased as well. And so we definitely want to send them a shout out and appreciate their work. So thank you all, and those are my comments. I will now turn it over to nine point two, Superintendent and Staff.
Thank you, President Rogers. Just a few comments this evening, Board. As usual, President Rogers is one step ahead of me. I also wanted to welcome officially, Mrs. Applegate, our new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. This is her first board meeting since you appointed her board. And we're, we're just thrilled to bring a, a person with such a demonstrated track record of success to our cabinet team. Know she's going to be doing great work for us, as is exemplified by her over 25 years of service for our district and our community. So welcome. And I'm thrilled to have you on as part of the team. I see lots of clapping right there. Couple celebrations, Board. Mr. John Brannan, a teacher at San Gregorio High School, has been nominated as a finalist for the Region 12 California League of High Schools Teacher of the Year Award. Mr. Brannan is a long-term, very dedicated team member of SBCUSD, very deserving of this recognition. We'll find out if he becomes the regional winner on December 1st and moves forward to the state level competition. There'll be a virtual ceremony honoring him on December 1st. And if you'd like to be a part of that, just let Karen know and we'll get you registered. We want to also congratulate Dr. Suda Venkatesan, our Director of Secondary Education, whose research paper, which is based on her dissertation, by the way, called Exploring Relationships Between Social Emotional Factors and College Readiness Evidenced by A to G Completion and GPA, was accepted, accepted among, are you ready for this? 10,000 submissions, 10,000 submissions. Dr. Venkatesan will be presenting her work during the 2021 American Education Research Association in the spring. So congratulations to Suda. That's quite an honor. And then in turn, lastly, in terms of celebrations, we want to congratulate Dr. Marcus Funchess again, who was recently recognized as the 2020 San Bernardino County Distinguished Service Award recipient. It's part of the County Education Medal of Honor Awards Program. This is a much deserved honor for a member of our team who has consistently demonstrated a deep, deep commitment to our community and the ability to be very productive in various roles. So congratulations, Dr. Funchess. Very, very proud of you. Board, you did, making sure I've got all my notes together here, as has been, as has been mentioned, we had a very successful town hall meeting last night. We had over 400 people viewing on YouTube and over 200 participants online. We spent about two, about two and a half hours listening to our community, and those exercises are always very valuable. I want to thank President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, and Dr. Flores, who were, were able to join us. I don't know if anybody else was. I apologize if I missed you. But we received a number of compliments from members of our community for hosting the town hall meetings, for providing information, for hearing their questions, their concerns. We answered a number of questions, and we always get a lot of insight, as you have mentioned a number of times this evening. We always get a lot of insight from those experiences in terms of what we're designing and in terms of program and how it's actually translating into the field and what people are experiencing. And it's very important for us to know if we're going to serve our community well. So I want to commend our team for designing a very interactive program last night, getting a lot of good information out, getting a lot of good information in. So very, very happy with that. On Board, in your original schedule of meetings for the year, you had a board meeting designated as December 8th. We did hear as our organizational, our annual organizational meeting, we did hear from the County Schools Office that due to education code requirements in election years, we do need to move that, that board meeting to December 15th to, to comply with that education code requirement. And so we'll have an action item for you. You do have to take an action item to, to change your official board meeting calendar for the year. So we'll have a, an action item on the November 17th agenda for you to take that action, but we will be moving it to fit into that timeframe of December 11th through 25th. So we'll be moving it from December 8th to December 15th at the next board meeting. I'm just checking my notes. And then finally, I want to end my comments or my remarks this evening by expressing my deepest, deepest, deepest appreciation to all of our veterans and service members for their service and for their commitment and sacrifice in protecting and preserving the freedoms we hold so dear. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We, we appreciate everything you've done and all that you continue to do. And those are my comments for this evening, President Rogers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. We will now move to, my screen's not moving. Anyway, to 10.0 consent items, 10.1 or 10.1 approval of consent items. Okay, are you all there? Okay, it's been moved. And second, is there any discussion or anything to pull?
Yes, Madam President, it's Dr. Flores. I would like to pull 10.6.
10.6 it is. All right, any others? If not, I will go ahead and take the vote. And we will start with Ms. Rosales Medina?
No. Oh, I, sorry.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carried. All right. We are now at 10.6, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I, Dr. Volkmer, I would just like clarifications on this item. It's a $1.8 million dollars, and it's over three years. So I would just like clarification on what we're, what we're using the money for and why, and because it is quite an investment, and if there's any invest, return on our investment for the next three years.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Flores. I'm going to turn it over to Janie to talk about, a little bit about the technical piece of that, and then I'll just make one or two comments when she's done.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. We've had this program with Synergistic for a number of years before I came. So this contract pays for three full-time energy specialists. It pays for the software that tracks every single meter that we have in the district. So they can see for anomalies or if we're being overcharged and, and some of the engineers and stuff that provide guidance for us. We avoid increased energy costs of about $5 million a year. And what I always like to do is go back and say, well, how does that compare to many years ago and what we actually pay? So you know, Edison rates go up all the time. Probably about 10 years ago, they were at, on average, 16 cents per kilowatt. And you know, it depends on the time. And you know, it depends on the time a day can fluctuate in summer to twenty-two point six cents per kilowatt. It went up again in July, I believe, and is expected to go up again in April. And and since that time, I looked at all of our utilities. In June of two thousand thirteen, we paid twelve point nine million, almost thirteen million. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we paid ten point three million. So not only are we avoiding the cost of increases each year, and some years fluctuate. Um, you know, they they go up and down depending on the weather. But with the board's leadership and in the solar that we've installed, we expect to save even more. Now, last year was even less, but we were closed for a couple of months. So I didn't use last year's numbers. So we, in addition to that, the board has received several acknowledgements of our schools that have won those Energy Star recognitions as well. And that's all part of this program. They help us with those applications. So we do get a return on, a good return on our investment. And and we continue to look for ways, and they work with us, that we can save not you to um electricity is our biggest cost, but water and gas as well.
Right. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I wanted our community to know that we wisely invest, you know, our our money so that we can save it and and save on the costs. So that was a decision that our board made, like five, how many years ago? I don't remember. My.
Well, I think like ten years, nine years ago.
Years, yeah, about ten years ago. So that's wonderful. And what was our savings, the last, was it ten thousand? I mean, ten million that we saved?
No, we spend, so we we avoid costs, what they call it, of about five million a year. And it starts to go down a little because we have solar and other things that we're doing. They don't take credit for that.
Oh, okay.
When I looked at the actual cost from two thousand thirteen, and again, they fluctuate every year. It was twelve point nine million for all utilities. And then in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we paid ten point three. So generally, almost every year but one, we paid less than what we did in two thousand and thirteen, although rates have gone up. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Really good savings in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and even more last year. But I didn't bring up that number just because we were closed for the three months. But I think the solar has, is really advancing the savings, and we will be bringing our next phase of solar to you soon.
It would be, not that you do it now, but I think it would be great to see the trend, the pattern from the ten years of what we're, what we invested. Uh, I'm not saying to do it like tomorrow, but eventually just to bring that pattern so that we can see what the savings has been. Um, so I, I I think it's a good, a good thing to show us off in terms of what we've done. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, I would just add, board, that, you know, you talk about how the board, this board has been visionary and uh demonstrated such good leadership way back when. Uh, you had a vision for energy awareness, develop promoting energy awareness and energy conservation. Um, Janie alluded to it. I think it's sixty-three. I would have to double check, but I think it's sixty-three of our buildings have earned Energy Star awards multiple years, not just one year, but multiple years. And I think it was, if I remember correctly, six years ago that the district, the board uh was uh received the EPA's executive level award. We're the only school district in the country to receive that level of recognition. So you've demonstrated great leadership, and this has been a just an absolutely, not just the money, but the, you know, the impact on the environment. You will probably, some of you will remember the presentations where they said, you've saved the equivalent energy of taking, you know, hundreds of thousands of cars off the road for a year and, you know, carbon emissions and all those types of things. So not only have we saved money that we can reallocate to program in the district, but we've also helped the environment as well. So congratulations on those successes.
Thank you. So moved. Second.
All right, it's been motion, and and there's a second. And if there's no additional discussion, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carried. Thank you. We are now at eleven point, oh, eleven point one. First in our report, number eight dated November tenth, twenty twenty?
Aye. As presented.
Thank you.
I'll move.
Okay, somewhere in there is a, okay, thank you. All right, if there's no additional discussion, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carried. Eleven point two acceptance of the new board policy telework first reading.
Second.
Been moved in seconds. Are there any discussion? If not, I will move forward with the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carried. Eleven point three consideration and approval of the Employment Contract Assistant Superintendent Educational Services HR.
So move. Second.
All right, it's been moving second. Is there any discussion? If not, I will take the vote as Ms. Ros- Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carried. Twelve point oh summary of board request. Twelve point one, a board request. It's Ontiveros.
Yes, good evening, board. Thank you. Tonight I captured four requests, which is certainly a lot less than I've captured in the past. So hopefully I wasn't asleep at the wheel. Um, first, Mr. Danny Tillman requested that we clarify the number of hours and days that in-person instruction in phase and phase two and three will occur when asking parents to to give their learning model preference. And he'd also like us to explain that the introduction of these new phases may also require that students change teachers. Uh, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked us to explore possible options for temperature checking on buses. Dr. Margaret Hill asked for us to develop a postcard to educate families about the things they need to know about schools and safety in this time, perhaps distributed in partnership with our grocery stores. And Dr. Barbara Flores asked us to share information about our savings trend for energy costs over the last decade.
And Ginger, I, Danny and I asked to agendaize the um our our decision about reopening schools or not reopening them.
Okay, I will add that to the list.
And if we're still doing the survey, make sure in the survey we say that the amount of time the students will be at school, if it's just nine to twelve.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great job. All right. Wow, not that many comments. And guess what? We're gonna be leaving here soon. Thirteen point oh adjournment, thirteen point one. Second. We are going to adjourn. Thank you all for.
Congratulations to us and to you, Madam President, for moving us along.
Right along with you. Thank you, everyone. Remember, we're in this together, and thank you, and God bless you. We'll see you next time.
Bye-bye.
Bye.